Everybody else can feel good about that, too. No worries.
Yeah.
I was supposed to shave my head.
What'd you say?
I was supposed to shave my head.
Were you?
You know what? You see your own hands, can't you? You know, you go try to paint.
Cookies are the thing that everybody loves. That's true. They're a lot of people. They're very good with a little. You don't see the snack maker box, you don't. Oh, really? Really?
Yeah.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize that she was the one that was responsible for funding our snacks.
Well, that's true.
Well, now that I have to go get some more things. You might have to check with Jason before you do your question.
Huh?
He said, "Yeah, I might have to check with Jason." What are you looking for?
Hey, you know, on all I had to do was, it says, "Check with Jason," so first thing.
Obviously.
Oh, really?
Hot, cold, hot, cold.
There's a tickle of instructions.
Are you fabulous? I can't, I can't wait. I've been waiting all week for that.
Well, I've come with three of these, because, you know, my voice is gonna be dying.
Oh, did you really? But you look like me when there were all your waters and all your backups. Today was such a funny day at home, like, we had like a lot done in the house. A lot of it was like, oh, like, like, used stuff that we needed to finish shopping and everything. But then I was like, alright, now what? It was sort of strange, I don't know. Oh, okay. Shit.
Well, that's a very, very good day, because I never get Friday stuff.
I mean, if we did, now it's mine, but it was kind of like, correct, yeah. I'd rather have it on Friday than if it's done on Saturday.
You know what I mean?
But.
I don't think I'm here for.
Nice day. Yeah. It was beautiful out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we have a.
We've been in last.
Kind of like, like, out of things that are not needed.
I know.
So much stuff.
Yes, we saw our light.
A bird?
Yeah.
Probably used to.
I don't read a lot, I don't read a lot. The last thing, somebody's.
You know, it kills me. I get stations for a while. What was it?
But even like, you know, like, I go to the store, I just don't mean like, I have so much stuff.
I'm already trying to collect like.
He has to be there, like, so, and then on the other side, I was like, what?
Yeah, so he never got rid of it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so like, a winger of crap.
That's fine. But there would be like a spot, like, I could press it right, you have to worry about it.
And it's a winger of crap.
And that always just sounds a little bad, that's why I was like, oh, no.
How you doing, Arthur?
I'm well. Okay.
Thanks.
I called him. Because his hair gets on his head. And he's like, no idea. You know, because he's got the whole, you know, the whole.
Yeah, 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 that's all. It's cards.
Do you do it? I, I probably not. I, I don't worry about it. But I never saw it. So, anyway, that's what I did today. I said I can do, just to get rid of stuff. That's what I did today.
Well, that's good.
I've got. Just practice.
You will not be in your busy place. You will not be here.
Another change. There's no idea. What the hell was that? Sit down. Pretty sure. I'm sitting here. I'm sitting. Policy. Oh, ca- cases. Actually, I thought about it, it's been a year since I've been up.
Did I tell you that, that that was important? So, but she probably watched it last night, and I got home, and went downstairs, east yard.
It always turns out that you're from here.
So, I downstairs. And, um, I walked down right here, I was on the. And I did delta, and first I felt like me. This montage began to be. I see how they're doing this, you know? I was like, I did like delta.
Well, I, 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 I felt it for a while, I knew that there was something there, so I said, "Check it out."
How wonderful, and obviously, well, doesn't watch a lot. Watch every single competition, leading up to it, I was like, oh, I am so surprised. Wasn't watching, it was very hard, and I watched all the quarters, just to be honest. Oh, okay, yeah. Nope. Just the end was enough for me. The montage was fun, and then it's like some, it's. Hey.
How are you?
So. Oh, oh, my God. David would be so. To see you out there with the little dustups, and then you were like, going on the whole thing, I mean, so. So. So that's what we spent long, just like, oh, yesterday. So sweet. Well, I, it was a big day for our hobby, like, it was, uh. Yesterday, uh, I'm in, uh, as I asked, my little, um, great. It was lovely. I had a big, see, busy. Oh, yes. And you were like, just open the whole, um, celebrating. I think everybody can be done. Yeah, we just stay a little bit. So, anyway, that's what they did while I was at the perfect. I didn't want to drag off again after that. But I, I almost do a picture of telling my parents. Really happy, because you were playing with a little E plus. Oh, I would be like, it's part of the water. It's part of the water. I hope that she's ready to help you, I have to move it downstairs. I'm still back to the middle, but I've figured out my little thing. Alright. That was my example. I'll stand. Just kidding. If you're not in the middle and you have anything and you'd like to join us, Mr. Scallor is not going to be here this evening. Okay.
Oh, God.
I did know that, I did know that.
Sure, does it matter? I'll come. I'll take Amy's spot.
Mr. Franchio, so would you like to join us at table?
I, I'm happy to participate, but I'm actually per serving on one of ninety.
Then you do what you need to do over there, I just didn't.
And you need me.
I just didn't want to dis- uh, dislute you.
Well, thank you.
But I'm happy to jump in and double team you. Yeah, also, if you don't have a man. But I love you. Here, I have to, man. Okay. Right, it's different. Has it moved? Did you? So, I wanted to, oh, I wanted to. That was our move. We're gonna let the group think those.
But he doesn't have to do this.
It deserves it.
I don't have a tax on me.
I mean. What? Where?
I think that one chose a person.
Start a call tomorrow. You're the only one who knows it. Your clam powder. Um, I guess. On the Saturday. And, uh. Are we all ready?
All right, so with that, I will call policy to order. We will note attendance. And two point oh one, we will go over the review cycle policies, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. So, the policies that appear on this evening's review cycle in this section of the agenda represent the last of the policies as part of the six-year cycle that we fulfill by the end of the calendar year. So, we'll talk a little bit about some of the recommendations on the part of administration for these policies and the policy language. If we start with, excuse me, two oh three point one. And three fourteen point one, they're very similar. And what's interesting, and I'll share with the committee, is that PSBA recommended a change in the title to. They recommended HIV infection, and the policy used to be called bloodborne pathogens. I am recommending consideration for including both in the title, HIV and bloodborne pathogens. That's what we actually consider currently in our schools, when our nurses provide some direct instruction to teachers, they give them little kits um, at some point during the year that have gloves in them, and they talk a little bit about some of the precautions that should be taken. So, I, I don't have a good explanation for why PSBA went to just HIV in the title. However, I'm suggesting, just to be more comprehensive, we incorporate bloodborne pathogens. So, as we go through the policy, you can see some of the changes. So, where there was just, um, th- this phrasing in the first statement under purpose is just a little bit of semantics and some subtle revisions. Um, there are definitions for both HIV and bloodborne pathogens. And then, as we go down further, um, I see a typo right here, we'll correct that. Um, again, some, some somewhat practical revisions, if you will, instead of a placement team, we don't use that language in school, I've referenced it as a team. When we transition students, we often reference a team that supports conversation and transitioning a student back into a building or into a particular schedule based upon their unique needs, so that's a change that I'm suggesting. In addition, I've added Montgomery County Department of Health and the CDC, so PSBA had CDC. We refer to the county health department when there's an infection, and there are certain infections that we have to, we actually have to notify them of, and our nurses take care of that. So, again, this is a recommendation on the part of administration. Um, I think it's really important that we continue to focus on staff development as part of the policy. And there's, again, some subtle changes to the language, I, I did appreciate some of the language PSBA recommended and incorporated that, as well as the language under prevention, education, so that comes over, but incorporates HIV and bloodborne pathogens. So, those are the recommendations on the part of administration. Happy to take questions that you might have or engage in conversation.
Mrs. Lofton?
Are we still considering HIV to be a bloodborne pathogen?
I don't know that we are, but when we consider preventing infections in school, we all, we often refer to some bloodborne pathogens as well, in addition.
Because HIV can be transmitted through the blood.
Yes.
So, I guess what I'm wondering is why we don't say HIV and other bloodborne pathogens?
We, we could consider adding other, I, you know, again, I was presuming bloodborne pathogens was inclusive, but we can include that. We can include that term if the committee agrees, again, if it makes it more explicit and understandable, that's the key, yeah.
Seems to me they're equivalent terms, I, I wouldn't object to saying other, and I wouldn't object to leaving it standing as it is. But HIV can be a bloodborne pathogen as the other examples you have in your, in the policy.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comment or discussion? Mr. Keenan?
I would lean towards, just in case anybody else is of the same mind, I would lean towards leaving HIV out of the title. I mean, it's just, I see bloodborne pathogens, I think that's correct, but.
It's all inclusive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why you say HIV in the title, and when, when you could, you know, I mean, why don't you list? What, all of them, Hep B, Hep C, and then if there are others, Ebola?
So, you know, I, I think that's a, I appreciate the question, which is similar to why I expressed, I wasn't sure why PSBA went to HIV solely in the title. We are required, though, I'm sorry? Well, and, right, there are others. What I was gonna say is that, what I was going to say is that the district is obligated to offer HIV instruction, which is why they may be calling it out as well. And I'm guessing that may be a, a reason why it's incorporated into the title.
I, I, I tend to agree with what Rowan says as far as bloodborne pathogen does incorporate HIV, but I, I also, I, I have no objection to having HIV in there. The, the reason that I see for it, besides what you're saying about, it's very possible that a lot of the regulations from both the state and the federal government require us to have specific HIV policies, and, and it needs to be laid out that way. I think for the common person, having HIV called out as part of the policy and preceding the bloodborne pathogen there makes it clearer for the general public on what the intent of this is. Where otherwise, if you're reading this, you would have to know that HIV is a bloodborne pathogen.
So, what would you ultimately then recommend, Mr. Liggett? I'm sorry, what do you think makes the most sense, in your view?
Personally, I, I'm, I'm fine with the HIV and bloodborne pathogen wording, because it, while I agree with Rowan that, that bloodborne HIV is included in there.
Yeah.
I think carrying that out as a specific because of the different regulations that we need to follow and the clarity that it brings to the title as far as what it is, what it's doing. It just calls it out, I believe, in a way that brings clarity.
To others with the knowledge that it is a bloodborne pathogen and it can be spread via blood. That's one way it can be spread.
Correct.
Yeah.
And whereas, if you were to take another bloodborne, uh, disease like hepatitis, I don't think adding that to the title brings clarity to the reading of it, where I think HIV, through the years and now decades of education, people understand what that means and the types of procedures that you need to follow to help prevent the spread.
Mm-hmm, okay. Are there other thoughts on this policy language? Here, here's what I'd like to suggest, Ms. White, and that would be, I'd like to follow up with the nurses and get their, their thoughts on this, and ask our department chair to weigh in on some of these references that have been offered. And if I may, if I can jump to the personnel version of this policy where it relates strictly to staff, you'll see some of the same revisions proposed. I, if the committee is comfortable with this, I would like to touch base with our nurses and get their thoughts on this, and then follow up with the committee, if that's okay.
That sounds good, and then we will, um, address it again in December.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Okay. So, if we go to two ten dot one, similar possession or use of asthma inhalers, epinephrine auto-injectors. And we have some recommended revisions, and these came from our nurses. Um, again, just some practical revisions that are being suggested to assist readers in really understanding the communication or the language of the policy. They're very straightforward. I don't know if the committee has any questions on those, but administration supports what's being presented here by the nurses.
Mrs. Lofton?
I'm just curious why you're deleting the line about having emergency care plans developed for students who are carrying their inhalers or epipens.
The nurses don't usually reference them that way anymore. They don't, they don't develop emergency care plans in the same ways that they once did for that purpose.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah. And as long as students have a note from their doctor and their parents, fifth grade or older, they can self-carry these items. Any other questions on this policy? Okay, so if we're okay, we'll send this one to first reading. Okay. All right, so we'll jump to facilities planning, which is seven dot zero one. So, the, the state has gone back and forth with its reference to the planning that is required on the part of school districts. It was comprehensive planning, then it was strategic planning, now it's back to comprehensive planning, so I've kind of put a line in, strategic plan, comprehensive plan, to cover both. Technically, right now, they call it a comprehensive plan. So, when, as Mr. Mitchell has explained to the steering committee, when we look in the PDE system, it's an electronic planning document that we must complete, it's referenced as a comprehensive plan. So, there have been some revisions that are based on current activities and how that planning process works. Otherwise, there are no suggested revisions from administration for this policy. Any questions from the committee on this one? Okay. Okay, okay, to send it to first reading, then? All right. So, eight fourteen, copyright. So, there have been, we actually did some research on this one and found some policies out there, the lang- where we felt like the language was a bit more, it was easier to understand for readers. So, there are some recommended revisions here for that purpose, to make it easier and understandable for the reader. And you will see those throughout. We did have our supervisor of humanities review this as well. And we are also working on updating the admin regs that support staff and students understanding the laws, copyright laws. Any questions on this language?
I had a question.
Sure.
Uh, it was just about the, uh, let's see. I guess towards the end, uh, under delegation of responsibility. I guess the old policy said that staff would be trained during, uh, teacher induction and at regular intervals. And now it's, just kind of says, "You're on your own. Good luck," you know? Because it seems kind of complicated.
Does that work for everybody?
That's really what they're doing in the practice anyway.
Just wasn't sure if we could get some training on what's acceptable, because, I mean, I know, I don't know if it's changed in the last thirty years, but I I don't, I don't know.
So, I think that, I, I really appreciate you sharing that, and with, you know, um, with some of the changes in our world, with AI, for example, I'm thinking that it makes a lot of sense, and happy to incorporate that. The admin reg talks a little bit about that, but if we put it in policy, it certainly is, it, it's more meaningful in that regard, you know, we're, we're held accountable to that. So, you're looking at the very last statement that was stricken?
Yes.
Okay.
That, and, well, and I had one other question, also, number, number three, under, uh, I guess under policy. Number three says, copying a small portion, maybe, ex- copying a small portion may be acceptable if the accompanying guidelines are followed. Are there, are there guidelines attached to this? Or is that, is that in the US Code, like, if we sort through that, is that where?
I, I don't know that it's in a US Code because there's no citation there. We are incorporating them into an updated admin reg, though.
Okay.
So the admin reg would be the one?
Yeah, Mrs. Heranko is working on that. So we will attach that as the policy moves through the process.
Okay. Yeah, I, that was my only question, and then the, just the training, because I, I do think people would benefit from something, a refresher.
Yeah.
And with that language, then, could you narrow that down to reference the administrative pol, the administrative guidelines?
That was gonna be my ask, if we could somehow reference the?
As the accompanying guidelines.
Okay.
Administrative regulation, be more explicit that that's what that is.
Specifically reference to administrative reg number, or whatever it is.
Okay, yeah.
And then you can change it, if you need to update it, or whatever.
Are you okay to make those changes prior to, and then we'll have it be first read, or would you like to bring it back?
So we could make those changes, and I can share it with the board this week in the memo, and see what the board thinks. And if it suffices, great, we'll move it on in December to first read. If we need to bring it back to committee, happy to do that, too. So I'll make those revisions, be clear with the guidelines and attach them, as well as incorporate that professional learning opportunity for all staff. Thank you. Okay, all right. So moving on to public relations objectives, policy nine oh one. Okay. Again, just some subtle changes, revisions that are proposed for ease of reading and understanding. Any questions from the committee about these?
All right, I'll move that one to first read as well.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Last one.
Last review cycle policy is publications programs. There are no suggested revisions here. Okay, so we'll move that to first reading, great. Thank you.
Wonderful, so we will move on to section three, uh, which is the, um, PNNs.
So we spent quite a bit of time last month talking about policy eight two four, both in policy committee and at the board level. And in the past, when we had, as a committee, discussed this policy, there were very similar questions. PSBA just updated it in a PNN, which is why it appears here. It occurred during the summer, and we brought it forward. And in follow-up to the conversation that occurred last month, administration met with PVEA leadership, they had many of the same questions. So at this point, administration agrees. There are lots of ways to hold our staff accountable and help them to realize the expectations and the guidelines around interactions with students. We are not recommending implementation of this policy.
Are there any comments or questions around that?
I agree, that's the wise course. It's a, it's a kettle of worms, and unnecessary, considering the rest of our policies.
I agree. Go with that? Okay, wonderful. Okay, so three thirty-nine?
Excellent. And three thirty-nine uncompensated leave was also a part of a summer PNN, and we had talked about it, it was inadvertently missed on, first, for our first reading in October. So I am bringing it back to the committee, just to let you know that, and we'd like to include it on a, in a first reading, uh, at the, um, you did, thank you. The, um, December board meetings, yes. I had to think about which month we're in, sorry. Yeah. But I think if I pull the policy up, just to refresh everyone's memory, so three three nine, so it's in the personnel section. And some of the uncompensated leaves that our staff would take are driven by language in the agreement, so that's called out here, it's referenced. Mr. Moran and I are working on an admin reg as we unpack more of the details around maybe the number of times individuals might request unpaid or uncompensated leave. That takes us beyond some of the general language that appears in the agreement.
So, I, the only issue that I had, um, it wasn't really even an issue, but it was just comment, is that, uh, when attendance can, you know, becomes an issue, even if they're taking the uncompensated leave. And so I, I see the note in here, um, about public office. I mean, all of that makes sense, that's a kind of an extenuating circumstance. But for those that may take or request uncompensated leave as an hourly employee, should there be some sort of additional criteria to hit, a threshold to hit, not in excess of? Like, you just shouldn't be able to take unlimited uncompensated leave at, at the discretion of, you know, permission, asking permission.
Yeah, I, I don't know if Mr. Moran wants to weigh in, but that's, that's a question we have as well. And we're trying to figure out, through an admin reg, whether or not we can clearly identify that for staff. And we certainly can't violate an agreement, language in an agreement. We can unpack it a little bit further, just to make sure that we are also striking the right balance with the needs of the district and people that may take those leaves now.
And I think we're talking about two different employees, right? Because there's, I, I just think it's a, I think it's a different type of, I don't know if you can break it down by maybe bargaining unit, I don't know.
We could probably do that in the admin reg, because there are some differences that exist. And some agreements may even be silent on it, um.
It's referenced in two of our agreements currently. So our main is custodial food service, and then it's also referenced in PAVESPA. So, um, we're working through that with, um, our solicitor, and making sure that anything that we put in the admin reg aligns to, uh, the collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's my only feedback with regard to the policy.
Yes, and, and we have the same, we have similar concerns. I can appreciate the points, absolutely. Especially when we're in a position where it's been difficult to fill positions. Yes, agreed. Okay, so if there are no other questions, again, we'll bring the admin, uh, reg forward. We've been trying to do that, as we update admin regs with updated policies. We try to, we make an effort to share those with the committee, and Ms. Widener over here is putting our admin regs in an organized section similar to policies. If you follow what I'm doing here, you can use the dropdown to go into policy or admin regs. And we'll certainly have to communicate, but she's populating a lot of the admin regs that we already have in place in support of policies. And as we add new ones, she'll continue to do that. And we'll communicate that once it's at a place ready to go. So instead of them being attachments at the bottom of select policies, you'll see the attachment symbol. They will instead, for example, this one has an attachment, they will instead be in that separate section.
Okay.
Great. All right.
All right, so then we move on to, uh, local policy review. The only one there is, uh, nine sixteen volunteers.
Thank you, so last but not least is the nine sixteen referencing volunteers. And we brought this policy, administration brought this policy forward because we had been talking about the child abuse policy that came out in the PNN. And there were some changes recommended, revisions recommended to that policy. There were also some questions about the requirements around mandated reporter training. And where we have landed is requiring any program volunteers to move through mandated reporter training. An example of a program volunteer would be a football coach. They spend time with a select group of students. There are also guest volunteers. You may come into our schools, or someone may be invited into our schools as a guest reader. You may come in and help with gingerbread houses in second grade around the holidays. So these are guest volunteers. They are not required, right now, to move through mandated reporter training. Where we have some gray area is with chaperones. They sort of fall in the middle. They're under the supervision of teachers when they're on a trip, for example. But they also may have responsibility for a group of students, and they may be separate from the larger group. So where administration has landed, there's been some really helpful feedback also from our public that's paid attention to the, the conversations. Administration has landed at a place where we are not recommending requiring mandated reporter training for our chaperones, but we are recommending that they are well-informed before they chaperone a trip and take a trip, and know to go to the teacher in charge if something is shared with them by a student that needs to be reported. Overnight field trip chaperones would be required to move through the mandated reporter training. It's a three-hour training, online, they submit their certificate to HR when it's completed.
So the only question that I have, then, with regard to the last piece of it, Dr. Russell, is, um, the turnaround for the certificate.
So?
Between committing to the overnight trip and then doing the training, and then getting the certificate back in. Sometimes there's a delay in that certificate coming.
So for the, the mandated reporter training, um, that certificate is immediate. So as soon as you're done with it?
Yep.
Your certificate, um?
Auto-populates.
It populates, right.
Populates, it's available, you would send it to then HR, and then we would process it immediately.
Okay, and, and so I'm fine with all of that, I just, in terms of each building, we don't have that many overnight trips, so it can be planned ahead.
Right.
But at the same time, you know, it can't be a last-minute sub-in if, do you know what I'm saying?
Right, and so I think with this, the, the suggested, I guess, the, uh, the prompting of us to really look at the delineation between program volunteers and guest volunteers, we have to communicate with our staff so that our staff, in turn, can communicate with chaperones that attend trips. If they're going to Philadelphia for the day with eighth grade or with fifth grade, that our chaperones are well aware, if a student would report something that raises a question, they need to, in turn, report it to the teacher that they are working with.
Yep.
Anybody who is a program volunteer, and we are starting to get all of them board-approved, needs to submit their certificate to HR.
As part of their progress?
Yes.
So if I recall correctly, if you are a trained mandated reporter, and then you have knowledge that you failed to report, there are serious penalties that are attached to that. Is that, is my recollection correct?
Yes, if you are an individual who, in the eyes of the state, is obligated as a mandated reporter, yes, if you don't follow through, there can be, yeah, you can be disciplined.
And then you become registered as a, you know, there's, I think, five-figure fines and jail time that can be associated with not reporting something, if you become a mandated reporter.
Well, I can't speak to that, but we are obligated to report.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just wondering if we actually want to be asking volunteers to take on that level of responsibility and authority, and if perhaps the district might want to have its own separate training for the program volunteers that is not, um, attached to potentially very serious penalties if there's a gray area, they're not, I mean, I know in the training, uh, it's, you know, if there's a gray area, report everything. If you, you know, had the slightest question about something, you should report it. But, you know, I, I just, I worry about the burden that that places on somebody who is volunteering for the district. And I don't know how many people actually volunteer in that capacity for the district, but I'm just wondering if it goes, if it, some sort of training that's more aligned with, here's our expectations if you see anything, and then getting them linked into the district, or some... I, I just, I worry about pe, putting people into a, um, precarious situation.
That was some of the conversation that we had had last month, and some of the feedback and concern that was posed by, um, some folks in the community as well.
Okay.
Taking the class, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Taking the class does not pick you a mandated reporter.
Oh, you're, you know what, you're absolutely right. Thank you, that, that's...
It's your qualifications, I believe, your employment with the organization. So?
Thank you, Rowan, I appreciate it. Yep.
Mr. Moran? Yeah?
If I can just, uh, share, yes, our, our goal is to educate those individuals about the possible signs and the steps that they could take. However, as a volunteer, the state does not see that as a mandated reporter. Yeah, again, it's really more to just educate individuals that are gonna spend time in overnight trips.
Any other questions or wonderings about this policy? Okay, we'll move it to first read, then.
Thank you, Dr. Russell, for the work on that, to delineate between the two. All right, so then we are moving to closing items, policy committee meeting notes. Two, five point oh two, meeting dates, our next meeting is, uh, we don't have a meeting in December, so our next meeting will be in January, January thirteenth. You have a notice of video disclaimer, and five point oh four adjournment. Thank you so much, we'll see you in January.
Thank you. Thank you.
this meeting to order. Clink. Oh, clink and roll. Ms. Widener, roll call.
Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Liggett?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Dr. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Dr. Weston?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection.
All right. 1.05. Mr. Weaver, are you up? Thank you so much.
The mission of the Perkyomen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weaver. 1.06 is the approval of the adjournment.
Ms. White.
Here.
And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. All right, 1.05. Mr. Weaver, are you up? Thank you so much.
The mission of the Perkyemen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weaver. 1.06 is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. 1.07, approval of the minutes. Is there a, can I have a motion to request the approval of the minutes for October 14th and November 4th? And is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any conversation about the minutes as presented? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. 1.08, there was a special recognition last week. 1.09, comments on any topic. This time I'll open the floor to the public. You'll have three minutes to comment on any topic. Please state your name and municipality, and I open the floor. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to reports and presentations. 2.01, student liaisons report. Ms. Tremba and Mr. Lees.
Hello. We would like to start out by reminding all students that winter sports are beginning soon, and to make sure they are signed up to participate.
As part of that, we'd also like to welcome the new head coach of the girls' wrestling program, Coach Ready, and wish her and her team the best of luck with the rest of their season.
And then tomorrow is also the annual Powderpuff Game, and our junior and senior girls are very excited to face off, and we'd like to encourage the community to show out and support this fundraising event.
Finally, as it's Veterans Day, we'd like to thank all of our nation's veterans for their service, and hope everybody in the community does the same to appreciate the day. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. 2.02 is the president's report. As part of my president's report, I was hoping that we could have Dr. Weston say a few words on behalf of Veterans Day.
Thank you, Ms. White, for the opportunity to speak on this. I've prepared some remarks. I'll preface by saying that these reflect my personal views, not necessarily those of the Perkyemen Valley School District, although I hope there's some alignment here. Today is Veterans Day, November 11th. While the observance of many holidays can shift from year to year to give us a long weekend, Veterans Day is always November 11th. It was originally called Armistice Day to commemorate the end of fighting in the First World War. The armistice went into effect at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, 1918. At that moment, the shelling and shooting that had gone on almost continuously for more than four years stopped abruptly. I was going to ask to play an audio recording of this moment, but I realized that there may be some in the community who may be listening through our livestream or listening later, for whom this might be traumatic or triggering. But I'm going to send an audio link, and I'll ask that it be added to the minutes, so that anyone who is interested can experience the moment when the guns fell silent across Europe and birds began to sing. I served in the Army for seven years, from 1977 to 1984, three years on active duty and four years in the reserves. My mother, my dad, and my grandfather are also Army veterans. I'm proud of their service as well as mine. I volunteer with a veterans group called the Guardians of the National Cemetery. We provide military honors for burials at the Washington Crossing National Cemetery, and I'm reminded with each mission of the ultimate sacrifice that so many service members have been called upon to make. There are some who don't understand their motivation. They ask, why did they do it? What was in it for them? There's a plaque on the wall of our Assembly Room at Washington Crossing that sums it up as well as I've ever heard it. "The American soldier," and by soldier I include sailors, Marines, airmen, coast guardsmen, and the guardians of the Space Force. "The American soldier does not fight because he hates what is in front of him, but because he loves what is behind him." "We volunteer to protect our families, our friends, our homes, our communities, and our ideals: the belief that all men are created equal, with inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and the notion of equal justice under law." And that includes our way of government, how we choose our leaders, make our laws, what we do here in this room, we are able to do because of what veterans have sacrificed. So on this Veterans Day, please take a moment to appreciate the veterans in our community and in your life, but do not think that just because you say thank you for your service that you've done a good day's work. It takes all of us working every day to preserve what veterans have fought for. Learn about issues facing veterans and advocate for veteran support. Recognize that we are a diverse nation, and that it is in our diversity that we find our strength. Demand transparency, accountability, candor, and above all, truth from our elected officials. Our veterans have given us the opportunity to live and govern ourselves the way we do, but it's up to, it is up to all of us every day to preserve that gift. Thank you.
Dr. Weston. Dr. Weston, I thank you so much. We're very lucky to have you as part of this board and as part of our community, and again, thank you for your service and for sharing and preparing those words. Dr. Russell. Now you have to follow Dr. Weston. 2.03, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. White, and thank you, Dr. Weston. That was quite a moving piece, and I very much appreciate what you've shared. I have three items along with Ms. Tremba and Dr. Weston. Number one would be I'd like to echo some of their sentiments and extend sincere thanks and appreciation to all of the men and women who have served our country and afforded us the liberties that we have available to us. Thank you. Second, I'd like to give a shout out to our high school play, Twelve Angry Men, over the weekend. That was really, really entertaining, and the students did a wonderful job, so thank you to the cast and crew. Congratulations to another great performance, and to the directors. Mrs. Giorgio and Mrs. Hennings did a really nice job. And third, the music boosters had a big event here Sunday. They had both gyms full of craft vendors, lots of people, a couple of food trucks out front, and they had a great crowd, so it was really nice to see community individuals come out and support the vendors and the music department. So, thanks to our volunteers in that regard, and to the people that came out and supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. 2.04, Celesters' report.
Yes.
I just wanted to add, I attended the play on Saturday night as well. It was a tremendous production. I enjoyed every minute of it, especially excited to see them doing Twelve Angry Men, because I've seen the last 10 minutes of the movie at least a half a dozen times, but I'd never seen what ended, led up to it. So, very happy to have seen that, and just again, echoing what Dr. Russell said, a tremendous show.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. 2.04, Celesters' report.
Yeah, just briefly, I received an inquiry from a board member at last week's meeting regarding whether the implementation of the revised procedures under the 2024 federal regulations, Title IX regulations, would in effect be self-effectuating in the event that the Kansas Federal Court injunction was dissolved, and pursuant to the footnote in Policy 103.1, 103, it would in essence be self-effectuating because that footnote indicates that schools that are impacted by the injunction are identified on the district's website, and the district administration refers the public to that website for the list of affected schools, and that would be subject to change by the administration in the event of a change in the status of the injunction. That's all I have.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Supers. 2.05 is Board and District Committee reports. Does anything, anyone have anything to add since last week to board or district committee comment? Okay, so then we will move to 3.01, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment, discussion? Okay, seeing none. Consent agenda is approved as presented. Oh, I'm so sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Now it is approved. Section four, Mr. McKinney, education.
Yes, 4.01, we received Mr. Mitchell's updates last week. 4.02 is on consent, and 4.03 is the enrollment report. That's my section.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Section five, business. Mr. Liggett.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, do you have any updates for us?
I have no updates at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. 5.02 is on the consent agenda, bringing us to item 5.03, the approval of the installation barrier gates, which is, now has the number in the agenda of $14,240. I would move that we approve this.
Okay, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
5.04 through 5.07 are also on the consent agenda. Item 5.08, the, ask for an approval to post the signs at the entrances to the storybook trails. The appropriate graphics are now attached and are being shown, and since they are now there, I would like to move the approval of the signs.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
5.09 was the reports for the grants and donations last week, and that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. Mr. Keenan, payment of bills, section six.
Just hit the mic on. 6.01, we have a motion. I'll make a motion for ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments.
Okay, is motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any conversation or discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. And 6.02, I'll make a motion to approve the treasures report and financial statements.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
That ends my section.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Dr. Campley.
7.01 through 7.07 are all on consent. 7.08 is the approval to attend the leadership conference for Dr. Russell. In lieu of attending the national conference, she'll go to the Disney Leadership Conference. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, motion carries.
And that ends my section.
Thank you for that.
Can you bring us back?
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, we can draw straws to join you. Very good. Section eight, support personnel. Mr. Fountain.
All right, section eight, or 8.01 through 8.05 are all on consent. 8.06, the approval to create cafeteria monitor positions, that was held off from consent before. Is there any discussion at this point? I would move to make a motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
And 8.07 is on consent, and that concludes my section.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Dr. Weston, governance, section nine.
Thank you. Section 9.01, first reading on policies. The listed policies are presented again for a first reading. Is there any discussion or questions around the policies that are presented for first reading?
Seeing none?
Seeing none. I suppose we can move those to second reading next month. 9.02, the approval to hold a second reading on policies is on consent, so that concludes section nine.
Dr. Weston, thank you so much. That brings us to section 10, closing items. Again, I will open the floor to the audience should anyone want to make a comment on any topic. You'll have three minutes, and you just need to state your name and municipality. Seeing none. 10.02, comments from board members. I will open the table for comment or discussion.
I would just like to say happy school psychologist week to all of our school psychologists in our district, and also to Dr. Campley. They are a pivotal part of our district, and we just want to thank you for all of your hard work supporting students, teachers, and families, and we just hope they love on you all week here in PV.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sadler. Anyone else? Okay, 10.03, notice of video disclaimer. 10.04, adjournment, 7:15. Have a wonderful night.